Front and center. And then from Garriga Elementary, we have Ms. Erica Coleman. Ms. Valdez is from the junior high. She is not able to attend today because she is working, but she is our employee of the month. And from the high school, we have the one and only Mr. Rolando Holland. So I just want to encourage you to give them one more round of applause. They do a tremendous job here. What they offer after school? So Ms. West does our STEM. And every single month that I go to our site visits, she's always doing so many great activities with all of our students. She takes care of everything and she is like the right hand to our site coordinator, Ms. Ana Loera. And Ms. Coleman also takes care of all of our pre-K and kinder students. It's a lot on her plate. And she brought in... But she has... I don't know what it is about you, Ms. Coleman. I'm always like in awe of you. She also started our keyboarding class since kinder and pre-K. So our students are practicing since they're very little, so that when they get older and they start with their testing, they can have the full experience. And Mr. Holland, of course, is our art teacher also in after-school. Right now, he's actually on his way to go to do a family painting party with our... All of our campuses at the junior high right now. So he does an amazing job. He's doing all of the murals at the high school. He's done two murals so far, and the students are working on our remarkable projects. And Ms. Valdez is also in charge of the... From the junior high, she helps us at the front desk, getting all of those parent phone calls right during after-school programs. And she also helps with the book club and the card club at the junior high. So she helps us out a lot as well. So one more round of applause. Thank you all so much. The next group to be recognized are our students. This past week, we had our high school students that were in San Antonio, and they were representing Point Isabel ISD. I'm going to ask Mr. Alex Cavassos to come up to assist with that presentation. But know that we start off with every band student that competes, and then we narrow it down to the region and then the area. And less than a handful of students from every campus, if at all... And I don't know if you have those exact numbers, Mr. Cavassos, but the students that you are going to see today are the very, very best in the state of Texas. At this time, Mr. Cavassos, continue with the presentation for our TMEA, Texas Music Educators Association, presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Capistran, board. Good evening, everybody, community, family members. My name is Alex Cavassos. I'm the director of instrumental music here at Port Isabel Early College High School and Point Isabel ISD. We are very glad to be here with you all tonight to celebrate the incredible accomplishment that only a small percentage, like Ms. Capistran was saying, of music students achieve in the whole state of Texas. The process starts at the regional level, where hundreds of students audition for a placement in the all-region band. And the top chairs of the ensemble advance onto a pre-area, which is another localized screening process. The next level is the area round, that consists of a more rigorous process than the region level, and the competition gets more difficult and competitive. Only 2% of the musicians in the state of Texas that started the process earn a prestigious title of all-state musician. This year, we were blessed enough to have three incredible all-state musicians. I'd like to present those three right now. The first one I would like to present is Mr. Juan Hernandez, ninth-grade all-state percussionist. Yes. So he is... Just to talk a little bit about JJ, he is a ninth-grade student. So not too long ago, he was just in the chair that some of these other students are about to be presented. He was in those chairs and was able to successfully compete with 10th, 11th, and 12th graders from 4A and below and earn a state in the prestigious all-state ensemble. Another round of applause for Mr. JJ. Our next all-state musician is 10th grader, Mr. Ryan Davila percussionist. So same thing, Mr. Davila. Mr. Davila, same thing, competed in the same percussion instrument as Mr. JJ Hernandez. And for our area, they only take... Our area being south of San Antonio, down to the valley, they only take two percussion students. Our two were the two that made it from our area. And I do want to do a special shout-out to their actual percussion instructor, Mr. Jose Laredo. Could not be here tonight, but he is the one that leads these gentlemen to the prestigious levels and to their accomplishments. So round of applause for him, please. And then lastly, we have another all-state musician. But I'm going to take a little time with this one, because these young gentlemen, this is their first time making it, and I'm sure JJ is going to be striving for all four years. We actually have a musician in here who made all-state, not just his freshman, sophomore, junior, but his senior year. There are maybe a handful of students in the state of Texas who have actually accomplished this. Mr. Mark Mejorado, senior flute, four-year all-state musician. Yes. Awesome applause. And once again, just to elaborate a little bit on Mark's journey, again, he started this with ATSSB. And this year, he made the leap, not for the 4A and below, but he competed against 6A students. Students from Hannah, Harlingen, Laredo, San Antonio, you name it. He competed against them and was able to successfully become a all-state musician. So just round of applause for all three of these. I'll take a quick picture, and just I also want to mention, his teacher, not just because she's my wife, but Ms. Cavassos has led him, just from not being a great musician, but just a fantastic human being, and his doors are open for anything that he wants to do. So thank you, Ms. Cavassos, for that.
Does every high school have students that make it to all-state?
Yes. No, not every high school has all-state musicians. Again, this process starts in early July. Then the competitiveness goes from September to January. And then that's when they go to San Antonio, like Ms. Capistran just mentioned. We just came back there, gave an incredible concert with all these other band directors and musicians and so forth. But it's very, very humbling and experience to have students like this that can achieve those type of caliber of achievements. So it's just incredible. Not every school district is blessed just like this. And it couldn't be done without our leadership. Thank you so much. Yes, yes. And I'm sorry, just to thank you all, Ms. Capistran, board's trustees, Ms. Ramos, administration team, teachers, board, band staff, and our community at Port Isabel and South by Edred. Thank you so much for your continued support. But Mark, if you can make your way up here, please, and if you don't mind giving us a few words.
Tell us about your experience, and especially this last year, this past Saturday, performing in San Antonio.
Kind of happy that I actually made all four years. I didn't think I would make it my last year, because it took too big of a risk, in my opinion. But either way, it just says "all-state" next to my name. That's all that mattered.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Ms. Capistran, can we have a picture of him with his parents and the director?
We want to shake your hand, too.
Yes, we do.
We want to shake your hand, too.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, sir.
Oh, this is fantastic, ma'am. Yes, it was.
I'd like to say a challenge for the two freshman boys. We're very proud of you. Our senior boy did the first step you all have taken. And look at what he did. That's a challenge.
Good evening. My name is Justo Cavassos, as everybody got to find out right now. And I am the head director at Port Isabel Junior High. It is my great honor to present some of our band students that have achieved the highest placement that they can in the TMEA and/or ATSSB Region 28 All-Region Bands. These students worked very hard all year long to win a spot in one of these prestigious ensembles. Their dedication and commitment to achieving their goals shine through in their musical achievements. Our Port Isabel Junior High students represented our district with big hearts and beaming smiles, performing alongside the best musicians Region 28 has to offer. I'm truly humbled to be their head director and would like to thank our superintendent, Mrs. Capistran, our school board members, our Port Isabel Junior High administration, my band staff, and our PI Junior High teachers, their staff, and of course, our Port Isabel community and SPI community for their unwavering support for the musical arts. Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Cavassos said, our students are amazing. And the students, our high school students, are great. They start off doing what I'm about to present. And it's humbling to watch them grow as individuals from seventh grade, eighth grade, and going into the high school and doing some great things, like what our three high school students here have done. You know, for example, Mark has been making these bands since he was in seventh grade. It's very, very amazing to see that progress. You know, JJ made it as well. You know, Ryan, he sat in those bands as well. And so some of the students that we're going to be announcing tonight, this is the start of their journey, and hopefully, it will continue on through high school. So we have Yanya Barojas. She was bass clarinet second chair. Jennifer Castillo Obo, second chair. Kiana Duran, bassoon, first chair. Geneva Eraso, French horn, fifth chair. The next student that we're going to be presenting made not just the ATSSB band, which is the small-school band, but she also made the TMEA All-Region Band. So she got to perform twice. Avian Garcia made trombone, A-chair for TMEA, and first chair at ATSSB band. Our next student is Jose Lara Tuba, sixth chair. Next student is Gabriel Medina, B-flat clarinet, 14th chair. Alondra Olvera, 15th chair flute. And Beverly Patino, flute, 10th chair. So we do have some more students that were not able to be here with us today. But again, we are very humbled. We are very thankful. And this is the first step of many for these students, as we continue to watch and watch them grow in their musical education. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
So our junior high students, you all see what's available to you. And again, to our high school students, being in that immense auditorium and performing with students throughout the state just makes us so proud that you were there representing us. So for all of our junior high students, that's where you'll be one day. And thank you to our incredible staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you. For all that you do. I know that at times, it is a lot. You all start working since the summer, July, August. Our kids come back early. You all have to dedicate so many hours to doing this. So this, what you all just accomplished today, did not just happen by accident. It was a lot, a lot of work. So I'm just super excited about what's going to happen. Para todos los padres de familia, gracias por todo su apoyo y con la confianza que usted tiene para nuestro distrito. Y ahorita está mirando los honros que sus hijos están achieving. Honrando. Estamos un equipo y juntos vamos a continuar a hacer lo mejor para nuestros estudiantes. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you so much to all of our parents. The next group, we have one more. And I'm not sure if all of our students are here. Our spelling bee winners. We have our third-place winner, Macy Garcia. Is Macy here? Yay! Our second-place spelling bee winner, Ellie Bandenac. She will be our alternate at our spelling bee. Our first-place winner, district spelling bee champ, Avian Garcia. And you just saw her a little while ago in band. Our students started practicing and over the holidays and looking and learning how to spell many words that I had not heard of in a long time, right? Words that are very difficult for adults, our students were able to do. So we are so, so proud of all of these young ladies. And we know that you're going to continue doing great. So if we can take a picture, please?
Awesome.
Okay, thank you so much, families. We're going to continue with our meeting, and I think it's going to be about two hours long. So you all can stay, or you all can leave right now. It's totally up to you, students. If you want to be here, you all can stay. If not, this would be a good time, because we're going to transition. Again, thank you.
Congratulations.
No.
Your sister?
Our sisters, yeah.
All right. Keep it up, girl.
Congratulations.
And what grade is the little one?
First grade.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I know. I do, me too. I just figured it out. I didn't know they were sisters.
I know we walked out to a full house. I was like, wow!
For what? All right. We're now moving on to the public hearing portion. We're having a public hearing for the discussion of the 2023-2024 Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER. That includes the TAPER Campus Performance Objectives, a report of violent or criminal incidents, and information received under Texas Education Code Section 51.403E from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. We'll have a motion to convene the public hearing. The motion made by Mrs. Amora.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Gallos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We're convening the public hearing at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, members of the board, to our audience. At this time, I am going to ask Ms. Naomi Guzman to present our annual report. Ms. Guzman?
Thank you, Ms. Capistran. Whoa. This is good for karaoke. Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Guzman, members of our audience, thank you so much for your attention this evening. Right off the bat, I am going to start by sharing a little disclaimer. I did not make a mistake with the year. I shared this with a couple of people, and they've seen it, and they're like, "Did you get the year right?" Yes, it's the correct year, because we are reporting on our previous year. And some of the reports are actually even two years behind. So it is the 2324 District Annual Report, public hearing as required by the state of Texas. So the annual report does consist of eight sections. Section number one is the actual TAPER report for the campus and each... For the district, I'm sorry, and each campus. So you will find that under the first tab. The second tab will include reports for the financial actual report data for districts and campuses. Section three will have information on the accreditation status for our district, followed by section four, Campus Performance Objectives. Section five, Special Education Determination Status, followed by the report on violent or criminal incidents on the campuses, ending with the student performance in post-secondary institutions and the TAPER glossary. So starting off with section one, it is compiled by TEA for every district and campus using PIMS data and student assessment data. The first page you see is the cover page. This cover page will usually include accountability ratings, determinations for special education status, the armed service vocational aptitude battery test, and distinction designations. As you already know, for the past two years, TEA has not released any ratings. So if you look at the cover page, you will only see one indicator that was released this year, and that was the special education determination status. So this is what the cover page looks like. Hopefully, next year, we will see exemplary or A-campus or A-district. This is what the cover page for our campuses look like. If you notice, no ratings are attached. The top one is for Derry, the bottom one's for Garriga. This is for the secondary. It looks the exactly the same way. No determinations, no distinctions have been given. So the TAPER report includes information on star performances. There are three indicators, three performance rates, its approaches, needs grade level, or master grade level. It is reported for each assessment, all grade levels, all subjects, and all grades by subject. We also have information on star progress. This is calculated for tests that have a subsequent test. So that includes reading in grades four through eight, not three, even though we start tests in three, because there's nothing to compare it to the previous year. Math, grades four through eight, and Algebra I. And it is reported by grade and by subject. You will also find information for our bilingual education. It includes star performance, segregated by various models for students identified as EBs, and it is reported for '24 and '23. So you will see the sort of a... So you will see the sort of a historical data for the past two years. You will also find information on our star participation. TEA requires 90% or above for star participation, and we have always exceeded that requirement. The TAPER report also includes information on attendance, graduation, and dropout rates. This information is, that is included here is for the years of 2022, 2023 school year and the 2122 school year. You will find information for the attendance rate, the annual dropout rate, the four-year longitudinal graduation rates, as well as the five-year extended rate, the six-year extended rate, and graduation plans. It looks like this, for those of us watching us live on Facebook or YouTube. This is what the report looks like. If you notice, like I mentioned a little while ago, it does give you kind of a historical data, a comparison between the previous year and the year that it, that this report is reporting. So our attendance rate for 2122 was at 92.5. And this, and on 2223, it was at 93.4. So there was an increase there. You can also see the annual dropout rate. If you notice, 2122, we had 3.4%, and we were able to diminish that, and we were at 1.4%. So we are making gains. Here you will see the other information that I was talking about, such as longitudinal rate. You'll see that for the class of 2021, we have 90.8%. You will also find information on CCMR. The most recent data for these measures are for the 2223 school year. Therefore, the performance on these measures is reported for 2223 and 2122 school years. So you will find CCMR graduates, information on college readiness, ready graduates, information on TSI results, SAT, SET results, how we're doing with kiddos that are enrolled in higher education. If you notice, on the example that I am showing on the screen, you will see that in 202122, we had 74% of kiddos that earned a CCMR point. And this, 2223, we were, we jumped up to 90%. So that was a huge, huge gain. We are very proud of that. You will see that we had 73.6 kids that are considered college-ready. And this is what I'm really excited for next year. In 2122, we had 0%, and before that, we had 0% of students acquiring an associate's degree by the time they graduated. For the year of 2223, we had our very first two students. So that jumped us up for 1.4%. I'm super excited to see the next TAPER report that is gonna reflect our 31 kiddos that got that. So I'm excited about that. Tune in next, next year, guys, anybody that's watching. The TAPER report will also include student information. This includes student enrollment by grade level, by ethnicity, by other indicators as retention rates, class size information. It will also include staff information towards the back. You will see information on teachers by ethnicity, gender, what is their highest degree, the years of experience. And we will also have information on, on the programs that we offer, student enrollment by program and teachers by program. That is the TAPER report. Do you guys have any questions on the TAPER report or how, what it includes before I move on to section two? Section two is a little bit out of my element. Good thing we have a great, a great budget team, business team that I'm sure has, have been going over all of this. But it is required that I include it as part of the binder that you received today. So that is our financial actual reports. So the reports that you will find there are the 2223 actual financial data for the district, which includes information on the revenues, expenditures, disbursements, tax rates, fund balance. Fund balance with a D? All this time, I thought it was called fun balance. And I'm like, why is it fun? What are we doing with it? That's so much fun. So fund balance. And then you will also find reports on actual financial data for each campus. And it'll, it includes expenditures by object, by function, and by program. The most recent year for this data available is 2223. Section three, this is our district accreditation status. Generally, this will be part of our cover page for the TAPER report. And it'll give us an accreditation of accredited, accredited warrant, accredited probation, not accredited. It'll also give us accountability ratings. For the past two years, TEA has not released accreditation status because they're under litigation. So it is required, you will see in red lettering there, it is required for us to continue to provide our, our board and our community with the last accreditation that was released, which was back in 2223, and we received accreditation. Section four addresses campus improvement plans. So I have just added the links there. These are available on our school website. Each campus has developed their CIP as required by Texas Education Code 11.253. It includes performance objectives that are to be approved by the board. Each campus periodically measures progress towards its performance objectives. And again, you can find them on our school websites. Section five addresses the special education determination status, which was the only thing included in our cover page. This determination status reflects to the extent a local education agency is meeting the requirements and purposes of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So there's four determinations or four, for determinations that you could receive. Meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, and needs substantial intervention. So we have met the highest requirement, which is meets requirement. Section six, reports on violent or criminal incidents. This is also something that needs to be included in this presentation. As part of its annual report, a report on violent or criminal incidents that occur on each campus must include the number, rate, and type of violent or criminal incidents that occur on each campus, descriptions of the school violence prevention and violence intervention policies and procedures used to protect the students, and the findings from the evaluation. So this is, this is our report for last year. If you notice, I highlighted the only thing that we had was three incidents under felony controlled substance violation at our high school campus. Last year, this was a much higher number. I believe this was 11, and the junior high was one. So we significantly dropped, yes.
Is that a typo there? It shows three, and then at the total incident, it's 13.
Oh, yes. It's a typo. It's supposed to be three. Thank you for that. And I was gonna say, I'm perfect, I don't make mistakes. Oh, man, I can't say that anymore. Thank you. So yes, three. So last year, it was 11, and then we had two somewhere else. That's why that 13th is our... And then the junior high had one somewhere. So we really significantly dropped the number of incidents at our campuses. So that's a good thing. So as required by TEA, the district has taken the following actions. Prior to the start of the 2422 school year, we did conduct a summer targeted partial safety audit. We continue to conduct exterior door safety audits. The, there is a safety and security committee that comes together to review the emergency operations plan. We ensure that all staff, including substitutes, so that is part of our substitute orientation, gets the specific training on safety procedures for our district. We ensure that every campus has scheduled all mandatory drills for the school year. If you are part of Raptor, you will see all the alerts coming in, right? Fire drill and all these things. We ensure that all threat assessment teams members are trained, and then they, the team continues to review and, as necessary, update any access control procedures. All of these things are also available in the district improvement plan and the corresponding campus improvement plans found on the district website. Section seven, student performance in post-secondary institutions. The Texas Education Code, Section 39.306, requires its district to publish as part of its annual report a report on student performance in post-secondary institutions during the first year enrolled after graduation from high school. This information was compiled by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and the most current report is for 2122 high school graduates. So we had a total high school graduates of 148 that year graduate, 46 enrolled in a four-year public university, 22 in a two-year public college, two in independent college, nine were not trackable and not found, 69. And the last section is the glossary. And the glossary is prepared by TEA, and it is published alongside the TAPER report. It provides definitions, describes methodologies, and lists sources for each data point in the TAPER. This, the district TAPER report will be posted on the district's website within two weeks after this meeting. Paper copies will also be available at the district central office and on each campus in the district at request. So if there's a parent that would like it, they could come visit us or campus, and they will print this out for them. Of course, if they have any questions, or anybody have any questions, they can feel free to contact me, and I will do the best I can to answer any questions they may have. Do you have any questions or comments for me?
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your attention, Ms. Capistran.
Okay, I'll open it for public comment. Any comments by the public, the audience? Okay, any questions or comments by board members? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I have a motion made by Mrs. Galvano, a second by Mrs. Gustio. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The public hearing is adjourned at 6:45 PM.
Moving on to our regular board meeting. Do I have, has anybody signed up for public comment? Okay. Moving on to announcements. Ms. Capistran?
Thank you so much, Ms. Scott. Members of the board and to our audience, this is a reminder to all of our parents that Friday is a professional development day for all of our staff members. So our staff will be working, but our students will not be attending school.
All right. Moving on to the business agenda, approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion made by Mr. Galvales. I have a second by Mr. LeBlanc. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to discussion and action agenda. Item one, the point is the independent school district recommends the following. A, approve ranking for selection of general contractor services for central administration building addition and renovations for CSP number 0125-CAB. And B, approve that administration begin negotiations with the highest-ranked proposer. If the district is unable to negotiate a satisfactory contract with the selected proposer, the district shall formally and in writing end negotiations with that proposer and proceed to the next offer in the order of the selected, selection ranking. And C, authorize the superintendent to execute a contract in accordance with the procedures set out in Texas Government Code Section 2269.254 once negotiations have been successfully achieved. Ms. Capistran?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Members of the board and to our audience, we have been working with our architect, Gomez Madison Science, and they have presented beautiful rendition of renovation for not just the existing building, but an additional building in order for us to get away from all of our portable buildings that we have right now. Last Wednesday, we opened up our bids, and we had Mr. Mondial, Mr. David Mondial that is here, and assisting our business office, Ms. Kristi Gonzalez and Ms. Melissa Trevino in, in ranking. And right now, I'm going to ask Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Mondial to come up and present the process and where we're at. One of the, it's critical that we stay within budget or as close to what we have budgeted. And that is why we wrote this agenda item, asking the board after we hear the presentation, and if the board so chooses to approve us moving forward to see if we're able to negotiate without compromising the integrity of the original plan. So at this time, I'm gonna ask Ms. Gonzalez to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Capistran. Madam President, members of the board, members of our audience. So let me give a little brief background on this. So the district did request competitive sealed proposals, which we call a CSP, for the central administration building addition and renovations. We advertised in the Valley Morning Star and the Monitor and the PI Press for the weeks of January 16 and January 23. We did hold a pre-proposal conference on January 28, where representatives from the district and GMS architects, as well as prospective bidders, were able to come and have the opportunity to ask questions. They did a walkthrough around the facilities just to check out the area and see what the project entailed. They had to submit sealed proposals by February 12, 2025 at 1 PM. The district did receive and open five proposals, and we had to rank them. So the proposals were evaluated by representatives from PI, ISD Facilities Department, Mr. Hernando, me, Melissa, and Mr. Mondial from GMS. So based on the evaluation criteria, we did rank them, and that is provided in the packet, ranked from one to five. And we are making the recommendation to approve the ranking selection for the CSP. We're also wanting administration, recommending for administration to begin negotiations with the highest-ranked proposer. And we want also authorize the superintendent to execute a contract in accordance with the procedures set out in Texas Government Code once negotiations have been successfully achieved.
Mr. Mondial, did you wanna add anything to it? We all spoke.
So what if, one critical component, and we've seen ensuring that our building is done in a timely manner. And tonight, our administration is requesting the board to allow administration, Ms. Gonzalez, myself, and with the assistance of Mr. David Mondial, to begin the talks and negotiations with Peacock General Contractor. One of the, and this is what I was looking for. So one of the critical pieces is the timeline, and ensuring that we are able to get our, our building as fast as possible. And there was a significant difference between the number one, number two, and the number three. Or should I say, number one being Peacock, and number two and three. Mr. Mondial, is there anything else that, like next steps if the board approves?
Yeah, so I guess without getting into specifics on the actual bid amounts and all of that, you know, next steps would be if we, it is approved, then we will negotiate with, with Mr. Peacock and his group, go through all the numbers and try to find out where we could possibly cut without compromising the design, which is gonna be a little tough. It's not a very big addition. I think that's probably what hurt us as far as the numbers go. But the numbers were very tight. There were not a lot of specific questions, so I think everybody saw it the same way. It wasn't like we had a, a big discrepancy in numbers. But I guess that would be the next, the next thing that we would try to do, to try to work on that with the consultants and with all the subcontractors to see if we can come up with, with some, some reduction.
And we've seen Mr. Peacock before, and I, I wanna say, just based on our past experience, I appreciate you always communicating effectively with our team. And we won't go into the issues in the past, but I do appreciate, I think we all do appreciate your efforts and to always...
but I do, um, appreciate, I think we all do appreciate your efforts into always trying to communicate effectively with our staff, so. Thank you, sir. I have, I have a motion made by Mrs. Galvano, second by Mrs. Castillo. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to, moving on to item two, recommend approval of payment to E R O Architect Services for Phase Two Staff of Staff Restrooms, High School Auditorium, Junior High Stage, Gym, Locker Room Life Skills, Phase Three Darien Guriga Elementary New Construction, Trails and Site Improvements, and Phase Four Career and Technical Education Building at the high school in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Ms. Capistran?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Members of the board and to all of our audience. Uh, this agenda item, uh, is one that we are closing off. I will, um, inform the board that there are still a couple of items that need to be either, uh, addressed that need to be corrected. Um, and this is Phase Two. So for example, in the auditorium are, we have an issue with the sound system and there's a few other items. Uh, administration is asking the board for permission up to, but we will not pay the full amount until all of these items are taken care of. But we're, we're, we're coming up to a deadline where the bond says you have to utilize these funds by this time. And administration's just wanting to have that leeway of if the work gets done, we're able to pay. But again, nothing will get done if certain items are not done. We've been working with Mr. Villarreal and, um, Luis Serrera with the technology. So that the representatives for each of the departments that are directly impacted with that are working. But so that's going to be the same thing for the next item. So administration's just asking for permission so that we can begin paying this out within this next couple of weeks. Ms. Gonzalez, is there anything else that I'm missing?
No, that is exactly correct. We just want to make sure that we have permission to pay all the invoices on all the payments that are due to the, uh, E R O and Gurlock without having to hold anything. We want to make sure we pay everything on time before the bond is supposed to close.
Okay. Well, you, we are looking at, um, what was not completed on time and the deductions have already been done, right? Okay. So therefore I make the, I, I.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mrs. Amora. Do you have a second? A second by Mrs. Castillo. All those in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item three, recommend approval of projected amount due to general con, due for, uh, general contractor fees on the Point Isabel I S D Phase Three renovations to Gurlock Builders LLC, Edinburgh, Texas, in the amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Ms. Capistran?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Members of the board and to our audience, again, this is similar to, uh, agenda item number two. We are working with Fernando and who is collaborating with our contractor, um, Gurlock. But again, no different than, um, the previous item. We will not pay unless everything is done satisfactory. Um, and we continue working, um, with our team, identifying all those areas that are still pending. Just asking for permission as something comes up and we know that it's been done, that we're able to pay.
And do I have a motion? I have a motion made by Mrs. Galvano. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Davalos. Any questions or comments by board members? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four, recommend approval of projected amount due for gen, for the general contractor fees associated with the Point Isabel I S D Phase Four View Construction Project, the Career and Technical Education Building to Gurlock Builders LLC located in Edinburgh, Texas, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Ms. Capistran?
Ms. Scott, members of the board and to our audience, uh, this is the C T E building. And again, we're working with Fernando. Um, there's a, a couple of areas, one specifically for the panel lights that we, um, saw when we did the walkthrough. Those are still pending. Uh, we're also, uh, pending the drainage. Um, and again, the board saw that, um, in the covered canopy area. Those are the two main items. Um, I believe the issue with the culinary building was already resolved or is getting resolved. Um, but those are the two items. So again, we will not pay, um, something that is not complete, but we can pay if something is done without waiting and getting too close to the end of our bond payment deadline.
I make a motion.
I have a motion made by Mrs. Amora. A second by Mrs. Galvano. Any questions or comments by board members? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six, recommend approval of fencing. I'm sorry, number five, recommend approval of district-wide exterior doors from Brex Commercial Door in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Ms. Capistran?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Members of the board and to our audience. This next item is an item, uh, that is being funded under our safety grant and that is for the replacement of exterior doors. Uh, this evening, we have, uh, representatives from Brex Commercial and they're going to provide, um, us with a brief presentation. Ms. Kirsty Damitis has been working with them. And, uh, after this presentation, administration is asking, um, for approval no more than four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. And I do want to, um, inform Brex that, uh, administration wants to go over everything one more time, um, to ensure that we are selecting the correct doors with the correct hardware. And, uh, depending on the site, whether it's going to be a glass door or not. Um, so there's a couple of, of things and when I met with Ms. Damitis one final time again today, I saw some opportunities, um, that we're able to work with the numbers. Um, so we'll be, we'll be working with Ms. Damitis, with Mr. Villarreal and administration. But at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Damitis, uh, to provide a brief overview. Ms. Damitis?
Good evening, Ms., uh, Scott, members of the board and Ms. Capistran and, um, our community. So I do have Brex Construction here with us and so they are going to go ahead and show us, uh, PowerPoint some of their door upgrades for district-wide exterior doors. And so what we are recommending are to replace our exterior doors district-wide. So I'm going to go ahead and pass the mic to them.
Thank you guys for having us. Uh, thank you all for your time and, uh, we'll get started. We have this little short presentation, just, uh, uh, what we saw when we did the walkthrough. Okay, so a little brief introduction. We're, we're from McAllen, Texas. We've been open for eleven years and, uh, commercial doors are, are thing. Um, we do a lot of work with local I S Ds, um, any type of building pretty much. Uh, go ahead. Some notable projects that we've done, we worked with McAllen I S D on a lot of their, um, they've also been doing similar projects to this. They've been replacing storefronts. Uh, one of the recent projects we just wrapped up with them was, uh, kitchen renovation, Mission C I S D. They also did, uh, security vestibules, uh, district-wide and we provided the doors, the storefront doors and all the security hardware. Hardin Jen I S D, uh, we did, uh, five campuses. All the schools were replaced. Uh, all the hollow metal doors were replaced for that project. Uh, Lazada I S D, same thing. We replaced metal doors. P S J I S D, uh, we, we, we're supplying them constantly with door products and security hardware. And then we're currently doing a project, uh, through a contractor for Donna I S D on three elementary schools. So we are pretty familiar with the type of hardware and requirements that, that schools need, right? So, uh, go ahead, Miguel. These are some of the pictures that we're proposing. Uh, pretty much when we walked the, the district or the schools, we saw this type of door, but they're already old. There are a lot of the latching hardware that's supposed to be locking when the door closes isn't really functioning. So we're proposing to provide new doors just like this. Um, and as you can see, there's a center mullion in the middle. So that mullion, we saw that a lot of the schools here don't have that mullion and that is the most secure way to secure a double door, which most of the doors are double doors. So that's something we're also proposing, right, to add some extra security on there. Uh, some of the problems that we saw throughout the schools here was, uh, just inconsistent, um, doors. So if you go on to the next slide real quick, one more. Oh, nevermind, they didn't have it, yeah. But pretty much, um, you can see on, on that door right there, the styles on the doors are really narrow and that pretty much makes it like a lighter traffic door compared to the one on the, another slide. Like the top right, you can see how it's really, uh, it's called a white style door. So that's what we also proposed, uh, to have all the doors to be wide, which are for high traffic. And they're also going to have that mid rail in the middle. Um, also some of the hardware, we noticed there's just so many, uh, different brands of hardware. Um, there are some really good brands. There's some really inexpensive brands, like the quality's kind of up and down. And, uh, a lot of these projects that we're doing with local I S Ds are trying to centralize their hardware to where it's the same hardware all through all the schools. So that it's, it's, uh, high quality and that it could also be replaced, right? Uh, where they know what they have and they request a quote for new hardware and things like that. And it could be done without, because pretty much what happens is a lot of, uh, you'll contact like a, a door company or, or a storefront supplier and they just give you what they have in their, in their shelves, right? So sometimes it'll be like low-quality products just to, to get the bid instead of having something in place where it'll be something heavy-duty, you know? And then also, yeah, sorry, the, the big one we saw is that, uh, most of these doors are not windstorm rated. Um, and this area is a windstorm area, so, um, that was one main thing that we saw. And our, we are proposing two proposals. One is windstorm-rated doors and the other one is non-windstorm-rated doors. The way to get around the non-windstorm-rated is, uh, we noticed that there's a lot of, you guys have shutter doors. So if you have a shutter door, you don't really need to have the windstorm rating on the doors because if there was to be a hurricane, you would put the shutters down. So there, there is two proposals that we presented, so there's one way to save some money on it, you know?
So would the savings still be a savings if you have the shutters?
Yeah, so pretty much, if you have the shutter, you wouldn't need the windstorm-rated door, which is more expensive. Was that your question?
Well, that's, that's, that's the question. So, uh, when you're saying we've considered the savings, what are you exactly referring to then?
So pretty much, uh, windstorm-rated door is a little more expensive just because it's, it's gone through testing and all the hardware has to be tested also. So the hardware on the reports are usually, uh, the heaviest duty possible. Um, and pretty much, that's what bumps up the price, the heavy-duty, the heaviest-duty hardware. Uh, when we're proposing, uh, maybe like, uh, not really a value-engineered option, but just something a little more economic to, uh, to meet the budget requirements.
We already have the, we already have the shutters, right? Some of them already have the shutters.
So on the hardware, all of it is rust-proof, waterproof, any kind of proof?
It, it'll be.
What you're telling me is quality hardware and?
Yeah, it'll be, a lot of the hardware will be stainless steel. And then also satin chrome, which would be, oh, they're, they're actually going to be bronze, right? Yeah, so, yeah, so it is resistant to rust because it'll be oil, uh, oil-rub bronze. Since the doors are black, you see how on this door, the hardware is, uh, like silver? Well, we're going to be using, uh, bronze, which is actually better at, uh, resisting rust.
My question would be, what kind of condition are shutters in?
Mm-hmm, yes, that's my question.
So some of the, like, let's say, for example, the, the front entrance doors that are used all the time. We would want to get the, um, the windstorm because we would need, they're, they're used all the time. They, uh, especially some of the areas that we know are, are wind gust, will open up the doors. Um, there's opportunities and speaking with Ms. Uh, Damitis, again, our team needs to meet tomorrow to see can we eliminate some of the glass in the backside areas that are not utilized so much? And it's also safer. Uh, also looking at some of the shutter areas. Uh, so those are some of the opportunities that I've, that I'm saying that we have a possibility of moving from, let's say this type of glass, glass door to maybe one that has the window. And there are some requirements, um, that Ms. Damitis has been trained on. If it is some, if it is a door that is used to go outside, we have to have at least a window or, uh, what did you call it? Of a door viewer. So there's, there's all of these spec, specifications that we have to comply with. Um, but definitely the shutters, uh, will, that'll be like next step, but that's not part of the grant.
But I just, in considering what type of doors?
Yes, ab, absolutely.
And, and how, uh, strong of winds do they, can they withstand?
Uh, windstorm-rated door can be anywhere from one twenty miles, a hundred twenty miles per hour to like one fifty miles per hour. Yeah. Oh, sorry, so go to left, right, right there is pretty much what you would be getting on the very bottom left, uh, picture of the P S J I S D. Um, you can see the mullion in the middle with the heavy-duty hardware, the panic devices and the door closures. And you see how the doors just look a little more, uh, like there's like more meat in them. It's a, they're a little thicker. We call those wide style, yeah, for high-traffic applications. So regardless if they were to be windstorm-rated or not, it'd pretty much be the exact same design as that one, yeah.
Alright, do I have a motion? I have a motion, uh, made by Mrs. Amora, a second by, um, Mr. LeBlanc. And I have one more question. Uh, if it's approved, when would this happen? So, um, that's a great question.
I, I met with the team this, uh, this morning, I think it was. Um, if, if our numbers are okay and, and we're able to negotiate, um, what we know our district need, they said, because I identified spring break as an opportunity. Um, obviously, we would not be able to replace all of them. How many doors are we talking about, Ms. Damitis?
We are talking about from.
Yeah. So it is a significant, um, amount of doors, but, um, I am asking if they can start working, especially when our students aren't here. Um, and they agreed if everything goes well, they can start, um, there is a delay in getting some of the doors and we know that.
We're not sitting on a port anywhere. They're here in the warehouse somewhere.
Yeah. So a question, based on what you gave us, um, and, and the quote, and again, we're going to see if, if we negotiate anything, but it, the price will not increase from what you gave us, correct?
Correct, yeah. From the two options that we gave you, the price would, wouldn't go up anymore.
Okay, I wanted to be sure of that.
And we did quote some of the hardware that was, uh, mentioned by Fernando, right? Mr. Fernando, to quote, uh, extra, like the heavy-duty exit devices, which are the Von Dupren brand. So those have like a ten-year warranty. So the products themselves have long warranties. They're around ten years for the product.
Okay, but, but again, I, I, I need to emphasize, based on the quote that you gave us, the quote, the amount will not increase.
Yeah, it will not.
Regardless of price escalation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure before any work begins, everything that they're going to need is here so that we're not left with vulnerable openings, um, at our campuses.
Like whenever we're doing the project, we would make sure that it's, that the doors are locked at the end of the day before we leave.
So you would not remove a door if you did not have a door to replace it?
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah.
How much, how much lead time would our, um, our doorbell company need to come? How much, how much lead time would our, um, our doorbell company need to come in and integrate that? Are, and would you guys do that coordination?
We would not do the access control part, we would just do the mechanical door.
But the first.
But that has to be done, I mean, at the same time, right?
Correct, so I would work with the company, with the access control company, to make sure that they would come and they work with them.
Same time.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Mrs. Ramitas.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to item six, recommend approval of fencing for the stadium and additional fencing at the Port Isabel Early College High School and the Port Isabel Junior High from Hurricane Fence Company in the, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Mrs. Gupisun?
Thank you, Ms. Scott, members of the board and to our audience, we continue with our fencing project. And I know that this evening we had, um, John from Hurricane Fencing, uh, had an emergency. He is not here, but I'm gonna ask Ms. Kristina Ramitas, uh, to present, we continue, we have several projects that are going on. Uh, Hurricane Fence is assisting us with, um, upgrading. We know that we've done a lot of great things in the, in our stadium, but our fence, um, is one that needs to, uh, be replaced. So, we're, um, asking for approval for the stadium, as well as some of the areas that are still pending. Ms. Ramitas?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Mrs. Gupisun, members of the board and our community. So administration is recommending fencing at our, um, high school and junior high stadium. And then, so what we're recommending is eight foot fencing around the stadium, because that is going to be secure. Because once three o'clock comes, of course, we need this, uh, stadium to be secured. Eight foot is the recommended, um, fencing for our stadium on the outside. Then of course, around our track, we are doing the four foot. And so that is what we're recommending around our stadium, and it will be paid with our safety grant.
It's, it's currently six feet, right? Or, I don't think it's eight foot.
Yes, it is currently six foot and we're, uh, going to do eight foot. And then of course, we're gonna make sure that all the, um, excess, um, fencing around the bleachers is going to be corrected. And then of course, we're going to put gates around the shot put area, and we're gonna crack that area, yes.
Alright, do I have a motion? I have a motion made by Mrs. Garcia, a second by Mrs. Samora. Any questions or comments by board members? I just say, let's make sure they have all their materials before anything is taken down. When would the, when would they start?
It is, they're going to start as soon as spring break, and then I did remind them about two days. And so the eight foot is going to be up prior and, uh, finished before two days in July, and then they'll work on the four foot. Uh, after the eight foot is done, that is the necessity.
We're, we're hopefully track meets, you know?
Yeah, so we will need to work around track these, uh, games, graduation. So, we will, we will coordinate and if we have to work in segments, so they don't take everything down.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Ramitas. Okay, um. Uh, item seven will be, um, will not be taken, uh, it will be paid. And, um, yeah. It is going to be, there, there will be a special board meeting on Thursday, February twentieth, at five P M. Uh, in regards to item number seven. Alright, moving on to the superintendent's educational report and routine reports. Mrs. Gupisun?
Thank you, Ms. Scott, members of the board and to our audience. Attached to your agenda, you have the public school disbursements for January twenty twenty-five. Tax office reports, financial reports, investment reports, and student activity reports. If any of the board members have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Moving on to executive session, closed session, the president of the board will call an executive closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero zero one, which authorizes the holding of such closed or executive sessions. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one. Consultation with legal counsel regarding legal issues related to D I A complaint from employee. Consultation with legal counsel regarding employee health benefit plan. Section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters, discussing personnel, deliberations on appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, and dismissal. Order here complaints against personnel. Item one, discussion and possible action on superintendent recommendation for renewals, proposed non-renewals, and resignations of professional educator contracts. Professional staff administrators, professional staff others. Item two, discussion and possible action of professional personnel report that includes employment, resignation, leave of absence, new hires, promotions, and transfers for the month of February, February twenty twenty-five. Section five five one point zero eight two one, discussion regarding D I A complaint from employee. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move.
I have a motion made by Mr. Davalos. I have a second, second by Mr. LeBlanc, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going into executive session at seven nineteen P M.
Executive session, it's eight seventeen P M. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session? I have a motion made by Ms. Galvano, second by Mr. LeBlanc, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we're out of executive session at eight seventeen. Do I have a motion to return to closed session? To, I'm sorry, a motion to return to open session. I have a motion made by Mrs. Amora, second by Mrs. Galvano, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we're back in open session at eight seventeen P M. Action on matters or items considered in closed session? Item one, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding D I A complaint from employee.
I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the law firm of Walsh Gallegos to conduct a D I A investigation into the complaint brought by employee and report its finding to the Board of Trustees.
I have a motion made by Ms. Galvano, do I have a second? A second by Mrs. Amora, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I have no action on item number two. I am moving to item number three, discussion and possible action on superintendent recommendations for renewals, proposed non-renewals and resignations of professional educator contracts, professional staff administrators and professional staff others. Do I have a motion? I have a motion made by Mrs. Amora.
Second.
Second by Mr. LeBlanc, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four, discussion and possible action on professional personnel report that includes employment, resignation, new hires, promotion and transfers for the month of February twenty twenty five, do I have a motion? I have a motion made by Mr. LeBlanc. A second, motion to approve as, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to approve as discussing.
Exactly, a session, okay, motion made by Mr. LeBlanc. Second by Mrs. Condu, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion made by Mr. LeBlanc, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Dovolos, second by Mr. LeBlanc, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This meeting's adjourned at eight nineteen P M. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.